I call this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Tonight, Trustee Dixon is going to open us with an invocation.
Yes, my hands. Lord, we give thanks to you this evening. Thank you for being constant. There are good days and difficult days. You are constant. We pray for your presence this evening as we are gathered together as a board to conduct district business, but also here with parents and members of the community that want to share their heartfelt concerns. I pray for open minds and open hearts for all of us in the room as we work together towards a common goal of educational excellence and security for our children. As always, we pray for wisdom and discernment this evening in all things. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. All right. Good evening to everyone. Glad to see everyone here. Tonight, we are going to kick off our board meeting with a couple of celebrations. We have some reasons to celebrate tonight, and so we're going to do that. Before we do that, though, Dr. Ferguson, let me just mention, I want to say, we've come together as a community, and tonight is a reason to celebrate. And so I'm going to ask that everyone would just keep that in mind as we're celebrating. We have several different things to celebrate tonight, but I'm going to ask that everyone in the room would meet us at that, at a celebration. For the last couple of school board meetings, we've had maybe some tense moments, and so want to make sure that we don't do that during these celebrations. And so I want to ask that everyone could join us in a moment of celebration, okay? We're doing this as a community. And so join us in that moment of celebration. I don't want to have to, let me just say it directly, I don't want to have to ask anyone to leave for not joining us in a moment of celebration, okay? So if you came to heckle, go ahead and keep that to yourself, all right? All right. Dr. Ferguson, let's do it.
Okay. Such an exciting time in Prosper ISD. I'd like to ask Ms. Brenda Calhoun and Landon and Rachel and Michael to come up. So this is long, long overdue. This is Brenda Calhoun, who will be the namesake for our early childhood school. Brenda Calhoun served in Prosper ISD for 20 years.
Yes.
Yes, 20 years. So she goes all the way back to Prosper Elementary, which is now Rucker, and to this school, which is a long, long time ago. A long, long time ago, officially, a long, long time ago. Brenda is what I refer to as the original teacher mentor. Brenda Calhoun took in young teachers and would keep them from jumping off the ledge before they needed to quit, and she would smile and laugh, just like that, and we'd make everything right in the world. And so I can't think of a better person for our board to choose to be, have a school named after. And I know that the board, when your name was brought up, and it was an immediate yes. So, which is just a credit to who you are. Just to give you a little bit of information about Ms. Calhoun, this is her daughter-in-law, Rachel, and Rachel actually serves as a school librarian at Rushing Middle School, so she's actually an employee in the district. And then this is Landon. And Landon might used to drive across the playground at Rucker or Butler Elementary to get to his mother's back door to get money. He needed money. And so, and I would open the door, which is not a Satanist thing to do. I know now, so, yeah, sorry. But I would let him in to get his money. So fabulous young man, and they have two children that will end up being in Prosper ISD and Prosper ISD students. So a very long legacy of Prosper. And both Rachel and Landon are major graduates of Prosper ISD.
All right.
And of course, Michael helped in all of this. Glad you're here. So I would like to give you these beautiful flowers for such a beautiful person, and then a note for you. So many fabulous moments to come for Ms. Calhoun and her family as we will get that official ribbon cutting and hopefully a principal by January. So you'll know who that person is, and we start working with them on this celebration of Brenda Calhoun. When I called her, she said, "Not me, I'm not deserving. There's so many other deserving people." I'm like, "Oh, no, you're deserving." Because she did keep so many teachers in the job, and she didn't even know she was doing it. And I see several of your good friends who are nodding their head. Yes, she saved me as well, so thank you for being here. And is there anything you want to say, Ms. Calhoun? I see you have a folder. You got your book paper stapled in, like, just like a T-shirt. I was so nervous. And I looked lifted in the house. I went back to get it for me. Well, good job, Michael. Okay, I hope I can get through this without crying. And also, I have some voice issues, I think because of allergies, or over teaching. Okay, thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for your kind words. I would also like to express my appreciation to you for encouraging the school board members to consider me for the wonderful honor. I'm not sure if it would have happened without you. To each school board member, thank you very much for this honor. I truly am honored, humbled, and excited about having my name on the new Early Childhood Learning Center. It still feels like a dream. I would also like to thank Janet Thompson for putting in good word for me in order to receive this honor. Being in this building brings back a lot of great memories, because this is where I started. I'm very proud to have taught in Prosper ISD for 20 years. I'm very grateful for all the talented team members, coworkers, and other grade levels, the support staff, principals, and superintendents that helped me through the years. They are a huge part of being as true as possible. I'm also grateful for the wonderful students and their supportive parents that I have here at Prosper. I actually had two parents, or adopted parents tonight, who I taught their second grade sons, and they're now in college. I appreciate that you've let in support of my family. Elementary teachers enlist the help of their family members to put up and take down things, things to move aside from classrooms, I have no idea. I am so thankful that our plan really was to be a teacher. It was an honor and a privilege. Linda wants to take this home. She likes it already. So there's going to be amazing little four-year-olds all over the place. This is a very uniquely designed building. We only have one of these currently at this time. And the really neat thing about this school is it's located on Lookinbach, which is on the south side of our district, Streets Lookinbach. And the design on the inside is a Ford region of Texas, which is really cool, that our students will have this play-based opportunity, just living their best Texas life, learning everything that they possibly can. And Brenda Calhoun, just think about that, all those little kids running around with Calhoun Early Childhood School on their shirts. I hope to meet you all. That's actually why you were picked. Yeah, we're going to put you back to work. You're not retired, but you're coming back. Exactly. Well, and then maybe they can come as an employee, right? And then you can have your grandson. See, we've got this all worked out. It's all worked out, so, yes. What do you want us to do?
Let's get on this side, but we'll just have that one side.
Okay.
Or we can over here.
Here, I want you to stand by your sign. I'm going over here by Michael's. Yes, congratulations.
Let me leave it alone.
Don't touch.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elizabeth Johnston, and I'm the Executive Director of the Prosper Education Foundation. I'm joined by several of my board members that are here with me, and I just really want to say I'm happy to be here. Really appreciate you giving me a few minutes to let you know what the plan is for the Prosper Education Foundation in support of our teachers and our students at Prosper ISD this year. It's been said that a district is the cake. Well, then, the education foundation provides the icing. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that's outside Prosper ISD, but we provide funds to make sure that any need that would enhance the education of our students can be provided. There we go. So you might, some of us may not know, and I'm sure many of you do know, but we're actually not a new organization. We've been around for 26 years, actually. I'm told that we were started because several community members got together knowing that there was a hole in what they could offer their students. They did not have the fields and the facilities and the training equipment for a golf team. So they began with the Prosper Open Foundation to utilize the capacity that they had as a community to fundraise and provide that opportunity. And I'm really thrilled to know that we are still here doing the same thing 26 years later. Our vision is to profoundly impact the success of each Prosper ISD student. And our mission, which guides everything that we do and all of the funding decisions that we make, is to support and encourage educational excellence, innovation, and achievement in Prosper ISD. Everything we do will fall into two buckets, and that's either to support our staff or to support our students. This year, we have almost $400,000 in support for our staff. Why? Not a secret. Hiring teachers like Ms. Calhoun are hard to do, and we want them all to be like Ms. Calhoun. So everything that we've done is to try and help you as an administration and a board to hire and retain the best teachers and equip them to teach at their highest level. Our support includes convocation, teacher grants, our teacher mentoring, teacher awards and recognition, teacher resourcing, staff appreciation, and professional development. On the student side, we all know that mental health is critical. And to help you make sure that our students are career, college, or military-ready, we have a long list of support programs that we think will help our students. We have a significant gift for ROTC, Hope Squad, Special Olympics, many of the scholarships, and a few other programs that provide a lot of student opportunities. In total, almost $300,000 has been set aside for these programs. Combined, that's almost $700,000 for this year. We're really excited to see this increase. It's little known, but in the last five years, we have actually given over $1 million in scholarships. And last year, we gave $350,000 in scholarships, and I've already had many preliminary conversations with donors who want to increase that substantially. So I see no reason why we won't get close to over $400,000 this year, which is very exciting. This is the largest investment that we've ever been able to make. So how will we do it? We raise money all year long. However, there are a few very important dates on the calendar for the Prosper Education Foundation, one of which is North Texas Giving Day. That is September 22nd, actually just a few days away. And this is a campaign that really is a great way for our community to continue to support. It is not just for us. It's actually a Metroplex day where millions, hundreds of thousands will give multimillion dollars to over 3,000 nonprofits. And I'm happy to say we're one of them. Last year, we raised $115,000 from well over 300 donors within our community. This year, our target is 125,000. We have six wonderful sponsors who have agreed to match every dollar donated, that's one-to-one, up to $60,000. This will go towards our scholarships, our teacher grants, our student programs like Junior ROTC and Hope Squad and things like that. So we hope to have as much support as we can, and we appreciate the district helping us and communicating that to our community. And look forward to coming back in the second semester to let you know all that we accomplished and were able to give. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Little?
Hi, I'm Cam Little.
We have Pam Little with us tonight from the State Board of Education. She represents our area, and she went down to Austin to help out.
Right, absolutely.
Got to see her in action, actually, a few weeks ago. The star of the show today is actually Jill Bydl.
As Dr. Ferguson said, I'm Pam Little, and I'm honored to serve you on the State Board of Education in District 12. I want you to know that there were only 15 of these awards given out around the state, and this is our Heroes for Children Award, given to Jill. District 12 has a population of 1.9 million people. We have several counties. We start all the way at Cook County and go across the Red River to Texarkana and all of the school districts that are in Collin County. So it's a big district, and Jill is outstanding and was our choice for Heroes for Children. Here is the resolution from the Texas State Board of Education. Whereas Jill Bydl has served five different campuses in Prosper ISD for the past 11 years. She has chaired organizations in various clubs, been a room mom and PTO officer, and serves as a member on the District Strategic Plan Committee. And she also volunteers in service groups benefiting the Prosper community. Congratulations, Jill, and thanks for having me.
And I think that any good student who turns into a great volunteer, who gets back to not only their school district, but their community, it probably started with a great mom and dad. I'm not going to ask you anything, but what is it that you feel like that you did as raising Jill as a young girl? And don't tell us the dirt, just like the things that watered her to where she is. But what do you feel like the two of you did that really made her into this great servant with such a giving heart to give back to others?
I think she was, I think she was born that way. She was born to be good. She gave us a few challenges. Well, I can tell you one. I heard her in the bathtub on a Friday, and I'm thinking, she thinks she's stolen something. And she's already been out once this week, and the jewel was one and done. I said, "We just have to go to the car and tell those people that are picking you up. You won't be going."
I'm so glad you're here. Go ahead, Jill, finish that out.
I did prepare a little thing to say, and I did, I've got a little note cards, I wouldn't talk too long. But it is such an honor to be recognized in this manner. And when I first found out about it, and I'd completely forgotten that I had been nominated for this award, I instantly thought, "This is awesome. Prosper won." You know, I mean, I'm a little competitive. To me, that was that spirit of, like, yay, we got it, we won. Since there's, what, 28 school districts in?
Oh, maybe more than that.
Anyway, okay, well, it's rock wall. It's love, joy, it's Plano and Frisco and all that. So I thought it was amazing that we won. And again, I can't do this without my husband, who's just supportive every which way along the way, and has allowed me to do what I'm called to do. And of course, my parents, they rode in the car with me yesterday for 600 miles to get here, to be here tonight, and they have led by an example. And you're right, kids watch their parents, they learn from their parents. And they were great volunteers all growing up, very involved in our church. I became an occupational therapist, because my mom donated time to a child in our church that needed extra therapy, just extra hands, doing some patterning. And I was maybe in middle school when I was with you, watching you do that. So that kind of led me to become an occupational therapist. And Dad's still volunteering with Circle of Concern. I saw his picture in the charity ball tournament pages. So he's been a great example. And we went down in our basement, I just saw this last weekend. He has donated 50 pints of blood, like a little plaque that he has down there. So they've been volunteering their whole lives, too. So they've led by example. When I first moved to Prosper, I was a transplant. I didn't know a single soul. I was leaving my family and my sisters behind and all my good friends that I'd grown up with forever. And when I showed up here, the very first person I met, I could do not, is Dr. Ferguson. And she took us, she was the principal at Rucker. She took me and my three young boys on a tour of the school. Not only did she give us a tour of the teachers that my kids were going to have for the next year, but also the students that they were going to be in classes with. So instantly, I knew that me and my kids are going to matter here, and she made me feel that way, and I knew it. And I wanted to invest in my community because I wanted to give back. So when I first moved to Prosper, Preston Road was like a one-lane, wiped-out road. And the high school was built, but they were only using the bottom level because they must have planned ahead for some growth. But they weren't using it all, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, this is going to be a long time before they fill that up." But that wasn't the case. So, yeah, so, you know, fast forward, I've been here 11 years. I've met some amazing people, and since I could be with my family, they're the ones that became my family. Raise your hand if we volunteered together, all y'all back there. So I appreciate you guys, because there's been times that I needed a kid to be picked up or dropped off somewhere, and I know I could have called on any of you guys and you would have done that. And Prosper, to me, is community. It's where I wanted to be and where I wanted to raise my kids. And, you know, there's good times and then there's hard times. And I've noticed Prosper over and over again, no matter what it is, good or bad or hard, we lift each other up here. And that's what I have felt, and that is what I have witnessed. And just getting this award, so many nice text messages from teachers, administration, everybody, my friends, flowers, cookies, lots of stuff. And so to lift people up in good times, and then we've had some rough times, too. Recently, we launched a volunteer here in Prosper. She was a mom, and she was somebody dear to all of us. And her name was Tammy Wade Meyer, and she grew up in Prosper, and she was, you guys, an amazing volunteer. I met her through volunteering, and I would like to maybe suggest, down the road to the board, that that could be somebody considered for another school namesake, since she has the pride and the tradition of Prosper and also is such a good volunteer. And I think all the volunteers would love that, knowing that that was a volunteer situation. So, I know, I think this is right, but, I am just grateful. I am just grateful to live here. I'm grateful for all the people I've met. I'm grateful for our school board. Talk about volunteers, you guys. These guys are amazing.
You did awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not done celebrating yet.
No, we're not, which is great. So I'd like to ask Ashley Pannon, the principal of Baker Elementary, to come up. Justin Goldsmith, the principal at Reynolds Middle School. Jason DeTong, the principal at Rogers Middle School. Kim Newman, who is with a grandbaby, first grandbaby, so she's not with us, but we certainly want to be able to honor her. And then Haley Stelly from Life Arms Elementary. These five individuals applied to go to the Bob Thompson Principal Leadership Institute. Not everyone gets chosen. Dr. Thompson, who is a wealth of knowledge and a great leader in our state for many, many years, he only takes a handful because he wants to keep his circle tight as he's working with each of the leaders that he engages with. So you all probably have, what, about 20-something in your group? And so our five principals were selected, and so we're very, very proud of you. We wanted to make sure that the community knew this. This is a year-long commitment, so every month, they go, and they're with the same cohort group. So it's a great time to be able to network across the state because they have principals that are from the sci-fair and then principals that are out in East Texas. It's just a wide variety of school district sizes, and then also school district leaders, high school, middle school, elementary. And so we just wanted to make sure that you all knew how very proud we are of you, and we can't wait to hear about all the great things that you will. Dr. Penn, do you want, oh, no, no, we're not. He's actually out. Skip that one.
Is that it for celebrations for tonight? All right. Congratulations to all. I guess I need to do this. For those who are here for celebrations, you are absolutely more than welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us. But we want to, if you're, if you, this is what you've come for, then we want to give you just a minute to kind of exit. Again, you're more than welcome to stay with us, but if you've only come for celebrations, recognitions, then we want to give you just a second to go ahead and exit. I know Jill Bydl has taken her entire group to dinner, so. For those of you who are standing, feel free to take one of the empty seats. You don't have to stand. Feel free to take one of those seats. All right, we're going to allow another 10 seconds or so, and then we're going to keep our agenda moving. Okay, we're now at Agenda Item Number Five, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Tonight, we do have one community member who has signed up to speak on Public Comment on Agenda Items. So let me read this information, let me read this script, and I'm going to read it verbatim tonight, and then we will hear from our speaker. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to... "All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee of the district or a specific student, you are encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in Board Policies FNG, DGBA, or GF Local. Please note that the Board will not respond to any comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local, audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. When necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate large numbers of individuals wishing to address the Board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted for each speaker. However, no individual shall be given less than one minute to make comments." As Presiding Officer, tonight, I'm going to allow the, uh, the one speaker three minutes to speak during this time. Um, again, we only have one person who has signed up to speak, and so this person will be allowed three minutes to speak. At this time, we will hear comments related to items on the agenda. Comments about a topic not on the agenda will be heard toward the end of the meeting. Please note that if you begin to speak about an item that is not on the agenda during public comment time for agenda items, I will ask you to stop speaking and wait until the non-agenda time for comments. The Board will show each speaker court courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking, and we simply ask each speaker to show the same to the Board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I will be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, in light of issues we've experienced over the past several board meetings, I must reiterate the call for respect. While the Board understands presence of thoughts, feelings, and emotions, the recent demonstrations of self-control and decorum has deteriorated. Thankfully, we've not had to escort anyone out of our meetings. I must make you aware that beginning tonight, no longer will the Board allow for audible responses to a speaker's comments. Out of respect to both the speaker and the audience, I kindly ask that you completely refrain from clapping, cheering, yelling, booing, or otherwise audibly responding during this time. Failure to adhere to this request will be considered a disruption to the meeting, and should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption, I will be forced to remove that person or group of, group from the meeting. Finally, it is important to the Board that we hear from parents and other individuals in our community. To that end, when the speaker gets to the podium, we ask that you please tell us your name and whether you live within Prosper ISD boundaries. Um, since we only have one, I can do that. Um, we have Aileen Blakowski, and um, Ms. Blakowski does live within Prosper ISD boundaries. You're a non-agenda item. I read all of that, y'all. All right, so everybody remember that when we get to non-agenda items. All right. Okay, so we have, we'll add that to the non-agenda items. Thank you. Okay, um, we are going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Informational Reports. The first report is financial. Dr. Penn, the one and only.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Dr. Penn.
These are titled, "The Interim Financial and Investment Reports for the Month Ended August 31st." Uh, the reason being, August is our, end of our fiscal year, and so these will be really completed with our audit, uh, which will be here either late, somewhere between November and January, depending on scheduling. So this is as our year-end, without any kind of auditor adjustments. And that's the reason for the title change today. So looking through our portfolio, um, highlighting the 300 and almost 28 million, this is our bond funds used, uh, for construction. Um, so this is, uh, what's, what's helping, uh, pay for all our payments for building the schools. Um, and then the general fund at 139.7, uh, which makes up kind of all of our cash from our local funds and fund balance for that. And all of our funds together are at a 500, uh, 501 million for our portfolio. Looking through our, uh, general fund budget, so this is all of our, what we call the 100 series, all of our local, local funds. Um, this is really pretty close to a wrap-up. There'll be some adjustments with our, uh, final adjusting entries and some settle-up and some things that roll forward. But, uh, but this is really kind of how the year ended, so really, uh, had things landed where we wanted to this year. Um, so all of our taxes, uh, taxes were in. And then with our, our amendments late in the year, our state, um, numbers were where they needed to be. But our, so our total revenue came in at about 229 million. And then, uh, working through our expenses, um, with 171, um, in payroll cost, uh, which again is, uh, usually 83 to 85% of our overall budget. And those came in under budget. And then total expenditures at 205, uh, for the year. Um, and then we will, the audit will actually do a kind of a settle-up on fund balance. I do want to highlight, I, I don't generally talk about the surplus deficit on this slide because it really varies based on our attendance. Um, but really, over half of that is through assigned fund balances through various projects that the Board has assigned. Um, or what we kind of refer to as, uh, rolling, uh, purchase orders. So there are a number of things with supply chain issues that were, um, put in, uh, encumbrance this past year that we could not get. Um, and so we're working through the process of adjusting that budget on this year, um, so that it doesn't hurt budgets this year, if that makes sense. So, uh, not for every little thing, but, uh, lots of large ticket items that we just have not been able to get. Some of it on order since September, October of last year. Um, and so some of that will roll forward. Um, going to the, uh, the athletic fund, um, with a revenue of, uh, 1.1 million, and this is, um, uh, gate money and camps, um, from the past year. And then, uh, expenses for those at 928,000. So the athletic fund did, did fund their events this year with a 218 surplus. Again, that's part of the general fund that we just looked at. This is just broken out. Um, food service, we did, uh, an amendment last month because we wanted to make sure we did not exceed, uh, what was approved, um, because we didn't really know what the food was gonna look like, um, as far as what the expenses would be and what the revenues would look like. But really, it kind of landed where we'd been tracking most of the year, at kind of, at just a little under 250,000 there. So, um, with, with, um, our August meals, we had 9.1 million in revenue and about a little under 8.9 in expenses. So, uh, that's really what we always look for in food service is just to be able to sustain itself. Uh, you know, take care of equipment and maintenance as needed, um, and then really just, uh, kind of support the program. And then our debt service. Um, so, uh, remember, that's just got two payments a year. So, uh, we had our taxes in at, um, 64.8, uh, million. And then we made, when we made our August payment, uh, that ended at 64.4 million, so a surplus of 613,000. That's really right where we need to be. This is really referencing the, the bonds that we sell. We try to sell as much as we can to keep construction moving as fast as we can with maintaining the ability to still pay based on the taxes we can generate. So this is really right where we want to see debt service land. And so, um, really just watching that close to build as, as fast as we can. But, uh, this is really what can, can hinder our speed sometimes. Um, then looking through, uh, four construction projects that we have going. Um, in Liliana, um, it is at, uh, about 80% remaining, uh, still of that project, Elementary School 16. And you can see the details there on how that one's tracking. And then Sutton Fields, um, Elementary 17, Dan Christie Elementary, um, getting that project going with, uh, 1.7 of those expenses done. The Early Childhood School, um, about 85% of that remaining is it going. Um, all three of these are set to open next August. And then Walnut Grove High School Number Three also sets open next August. Um, and so we will, that's still got, uh, 100, 102, um, million to go, 90 on the construction contract. And this will, um, start changing rapidly as we kind of move towards completion of that project, uh, ready to open in August of next year. And so again, that's kind of, it is August, but it is really the, the first look at the, the year ending, um, until we get the audit, uh, later, later this year. Any questions?
Dr. Penn, do you mind going back to, I think it's Slide Two?
Yep. It's the, the general fund or the?
Actually, this one, this slide.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make sure I'm correct. So, again, first look at the end of the fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year, um, in accordance or, and, and I'm comparing to annual budget. For current year-to-date, on revenue, we exceeded annual budget, right?
Yes, sir.
And for expenses, we were under annual budget, right?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say to you as CFO of the district, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penn. We have a really, uh, really good group. And, um, you know, this was done, a lot of this was done by, by a lot of other people. And so, um, uh, and, and Ms. Fulmer, we give her credit too, because she was, uh, she was here prior to my arrival. And, um, we've, I've got a great team managing it, but there's a lot of work that went into getting it ready too. And, uh, visit with the Finance Committee regularly, and Dr. Ferguson, Dr. Bradley, tons, tons of people. So I just, I just get up here and run through the slide deck. Um, tons of good people, but I do, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. We're at Agenda Item Six B, Update on Bond 2019 Construction Projects. We have a video? All right. We gotta change that.
Yes, we do.
So just for those who weren't at the, um, who haven't heard, um, at the last school board meeting, the school board, this was the Walnut Grove High School. School Board, I think the motion was by Trustee Dixon and seconded by Trustee Beavers. We voted unanimously to open that a year ahead of time. So we're gonna open this in Fall 2023 instead of Fall 2024, and we're super excited about it. I thought we were the only ones excited. All right. Uh, Liliana, do we have a video? We have photos, video? All right, video. Looking good.
Dan Christie, we just broke for a while on, so there's not a video yet. And the Early Childhood School, Brenda Calvin, Early Childhood School.
All right, we are at Agenda Item Six C, Enrollment Update.
Mr. Wilmore, may I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge Dr. Bradley, the construction team. Uh, you gave Dr. Penn an acknowledgement for the amount of construction we as a school district are doing. To have the financials we have, to have the progress we're having on construction in today's, uh, current economic conditions, uh, I just think, uh, a huge applause. And, and the growth that we have in front of us, I have the utmost confidence that we're gonna continue to move forward in that way. So I'm really excited about that. Thank y'all.
Same here. All right, this is another informational report. This is Agenda Item Six C, um, Enrollment Update. See the information here in front of us, um, total enrollment. And this is, and then it's broken out by high school as well as middle school and elementary. Anybody any questions, comments, thoughts about this?
Just to highlight, that's an increase from last year to this time, 3,039 students.
Anybody else? Okay, Agenda Item Six D, State Assessment and Accountability Report. Mr. Shirley?
Good evening, Mr. Shirley.
Good evening, Board. I want to present to you the 2022, uh, STAR results, give you update on that. I'll give you a more in-depth, um, version of, of this report in February. Um, just want to hit the highlights tonight. Certainly can dive into the weeds if you want, but also give you an update on the A through F accountability. So, uh, the STAR test that we took in 2022, uh, just a little background on that, the majority of those tests, we took online. Uh, going forward in, in, uh, 2023, it is a requirement that all tests will be taken online, with the exception of students who may have an accommodation and they'll take it on paper. Uh, there were no fourth or seventh grade writing tests. Those were eliminated. Uh, any students in fifth and eighth grade, the math and reading, they, in previous years, had an opportunity to retake a test if they failed it. That wasn't an option. Um, and then, uh, also included in those STAR tests were some field test questions. We'll get that, get to that here in, in the next slide and talk about what, uh, the new redesigned test will be in 2023. So the new design, they want to, uh, create a test that's more, um, relatable to students, that it's similar to what they're receiving instruction-wise in their classrooms. Um, four of the highlights are that it is online. Uh, they are, students that receive accommodations, they will receive those through, uh, the device, online. Uh, they could highlight a word to get the definition of it. There is a text-to-speech and a speech-to-text. If they receive that accommodation, they'll be able to do that, uh, online. There's new question types. Uh, in House Bill 3906, uh, they made an adjustment that no more than 75% of the tests could be multiple choice. In the past, most of the tests were just all multiple choice. So no more than 75. So they've had to make some changes to the types of questions that students will answer. So there'll be some, uh, sort of fill-in-the-blank, uh, dropdown menus, um, and their graphing they will actually do on the paper or on, online. Um, they also will be including more cross-curricular passages. So, uh, in the reading sections of it, they'll be, uh, relatable. So if they're learning something in Texas history, the question will be, uh, could be something from something they've learned in Texas history in regards to, uh, a reading passage. The evidence-based writing, uh, as I mentioned in the last slide, the standalone fourth and seventh grade writing tests have gone away. So they're incorporating, uh, a writing component into, uh, the reading test itself. So when we, uh, take a look at our results, specifically in reading, a little bit different than what I presented to you guys last February, some better news, I should say. If you take a look at the columns, the blue column is how the district performed, uh, in 2021. Uh, the red is how we performed in 2022. And then the state is there in the dark gray, uh, uh, 2022 results there from the state. So we saw increases in the approaches, Meets and Masters, uh, in reading, in most all of the grade levels. So we saw increases in the approaches, meets and masters in reading in most all of the grade levels. One of the things I want to make note of here with the English EOCs, the English one, the meets and masters, one of the things that I noticed in the percent correct that students had to get in the paper version of English one was different than the online version. So it's actually harder, the score, the percent score was actually higher online versus it was on paper. Most of our kids took it online. And the same thing with English two and the approaches in the masters. The percent correct was higher for the online version versus the paper version. So with mathematics, one of the things with math that I reported to you back in February was that when we looked at our results of the 21 scores, the math scores were mostly impacted by the global pandemic, the disruption to learning. It was much higher than the reading and even the science and social studies. So here, we're still seeing some results, the 2021 in green, 2022 version in yellow, and then the state in the dark gray. In fifth grade math and the meets, it actually came more difficult. The percent correct was higher than it was in 2021. So it was more difficult to, to receive the meets level. One thing that I'd like to point out here with eighth grade math, what we do in Prosper ISD, our honors levels, the advanced students in math, they're not in an eighth grade math class. They're in, actually in Algebra I class. And so they don't take the eighth grade math test, they take the Algebra I. So you have your highest performers that don't take this test at all. So that's a little bit, certainly there's work to be done, I want to recognize that. But this is really our on-level students and lower. The high achievers are taking this test, the Algebra I. One of the things about Algebra I, the approaches and meets, it actually got more difficult, like some of the other tests, the English tests. So to pass or to get the percent correct in approaches or meets, it was a higher standard than it was in 2021. I think this is probably more flat, more level than it is a deficit. When we take a look at science, 2021 in the gray, 2022 in the orange. We see growth here, circling back to eighth grade science. The percent correct for meets actually got harder there for those students. And then with biology, it was pretty flat. Social studies, with eighth grade social studies, we saw some increases there in comparison to last year. U.S. history, I would say, was fairly flat. When we take a look at the district as a whole, all grades by all subjects, and this is broken down by subjects. Prosper ISD in 2022 is there in the red. The districts in our region in gray, and then the state in the dark gray. This just shows that we're performing at a much higher level than the districts in our region and in the state. Any questions about those scores?
I have a question, Mr. Shirley. First, I want to congratulate the district for getting an A. It's a testament to all of our great teachers, a lot of which are here tonight, so thank you. But my first question is, on that slide 13, I think it was, you touched on it.
Wait, backwards. I don't see the numbers, so you just.
It's eighth grade math.
Eighth grade math. Hang on. There we go.
So with the 38 right there, that's, is that behind the state average? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, you are, and, and the meet, the masters as well. And so that circles back to the conversation of any of our honors kids that are in advanced classes, they didn't take this test, they took the Algebra I test, yeah.
Is that unique to our district?
It is.
Okay. What, is there anything that we are going to do to try to get the at-grade level kids that are not honors to get that score up?
Absolutely, and I'll get to that at the end. Anything else? Okay, so if we take a look at the A through F, I'm going to try not to confuse you on this, but certainly can dive deeper if, if I need to. This A through F accountability began in 2017. Previously to this year, districts and campuses were given letter grades of A, B, C, D, or F. In our recent legislative session, Senate Bill 1365, changed that to A, B, C, or not rated. So if you received a D or an F, you would have received a ranking of not rated. This is the final year of these current rating system. The, there's changes coming, and we're slowly getting feedback about what those changes are going to be. So there will be changes to this current rating system. When we take a look at the districts statewide in comparison to 2019 and 22, in 2019, 25% of the districts in the state of Texas received an A rating, 57, B, 13, C. And then you can see that the ratings have increased, honestly, with the A at 33%, 22, and 54% as a B. When we look specifically at Prosper ISD and how we have performed the last five years, I would start at the bottom. The 2017, 18, the first year of the accountability, we received a rating of an A and a score of 94. The next year, 2018, 19, we received an A again and a score of 96. In 2019, 20, we did not take STAR test at all. That was when we pretty well shut down and were remote learning, and the state canceled STAR testing for every district in the state of Texas. In 2021, we did take a STAR test. The thing is, is that the way this rating system works, you have to take a look at the current test that you took in comparison to a previous test. And because students didn't have a previous test to compare to, the accountability ratings weren't, were ineffective. And so this year was the first year in a couple of years that we've been able to take a look at our scores on the current test in comparison to a previous year's test. And we received an A rating with an overall score of a 94. I'm going to attempt to explain briefly how this is all scored. It's, it can be confusing, I'm going to try not to confuse you though at all. The way that districts and campuses receive their letter grade is based on three domains. And the first domain is student achievement. And that's really just straight-up STAR scores, how did our students perform? That's mainly at the elementary and high school, I'm sorry, elementary and middle school. At high school, it's straight-up STAR scores, plus they add the CCMR, the college career military readiness, and also graduation rates. So that's student achievement, domain one. Domain two is school progress. And school progress is broken up into two components, academic growth and relative performance. For the academic growth piece, it's a student's score, current score in comparison to a previous score. Did they show growth based on the scale by TEA? The relative performance is performance of the campus and the district to districts that are very similar, let's say, in economic disadvantage. So how do we compare to those? 70% of the score that we receive is from either domain one or two. The TA chooses whatever score you scored highest in as your score for that 70% section. The 30% is closing the, closing the gap. So youth department education sets standards for specific student population groups. Demographically, whether a student is economically disadvantaged, special education, a continuous learner, non-continuous learner, there are standards that they set that are the same for every school in the state of Texas. And how do we compare? Did we close those gaps in those particular ratings? And that's made up of 30% of your score. Hopefully I haven't lost you. Okay, so the, the slide here, in the middle there, is domain one, student achievement. We scored 93 out of 100% on the student achievement piece. To the left is school progress. The district scored 90 out of 100 on that. So for the 70% score, we choose the 93 or the 90. 93 is obviously the highest, and so that's what was assigned to the district, a 93. We take 70% of that, which is 65, and we add that to what our scores were for closing the gaps. And the district scored 96 out of 100 in closing the gaps. So 30% of 96 is 29, and we received that total A of a 94. When we take a look at the statewide rankings for all elementary schools, middle schools and high schools, 29% of elementary schools fell in the A, 46 in the B, 18 in the C. A little bit different for the middle schools, only 20% in the As and 43% in the Bs. And then back up for the high schools, 30% A, 48% B. When we specifically look at how our campuses perform, we fell into A and the Bs. Ideally, we'd love to see all of our campuses in As. What I can tell you, as I've dug into the research, the, the campuses that are rated Bs, they're trending up. So in comparison to what their scores were in 2021, they've actually improved in 2022. What, what I can also tell you is, what impact the, the global pandemic had on the disruption of learning, well, it impacted our younger kids the most. In their formative years of, of learning, it impacted them much more than it did our older students. When we take a look at campus by campus, it's a lot of color there. And the district is purple, that's our 94. In the red, that's each elementary school. And then the yellow is our middle schools. And, and the, the dark red is our high schools. And that's their overall accountability ratings. So what are our action steps? Mr. Linnick, can you ask that question? And so what you'll see in all the campus improvement plans is the top one. What are we doing to improve our professional learning committee, committees? That process, we're looking at data. They're not, teachers aren't just in their lesson planning, they're looking at data, whether it's informative or summative assessments. They're talking about individual kids, how are we going to, to move each kid to a higher level of learning? Through the work that Ms. Stephanie Sipes did, we've redesigned our summer school. We had more kids receiving intervention in this district than we ever have. We, we had the opportunity to bring in many of our elementary students that we've never offered that program to, and isn't maybe because they failed. It wasn't about passing or failing a course, it was about the kids who needed intervention and who needed help. And so we're happy to that, we were able to provide that this past summer. The campus data meetings at the district level, the folks that here, back here behind me, we go in out and we individually meet with the administration at each campus, and we talk about the scores, the trends, areas of concerns, areas of growth. Oftentimes, what we find is when we get there, they've already developed a plan. And so as soon as these administrators get the results, they're already developing and working to see what they can do to improve. We use different types of assessments like MAP. The STAR test is just a snapshot of one day. The MAP test that we provide, the students receive a beginning of the year assessment, and then some students get a middle of the year, but the, the rest, all of them get it at the end of the year. And so we actually can see, did a student show growth throughout the school year? The STAR test doesn't necessarily show that results. We've also added additional administrators at some of our high enrollment campuses. Why would we do that? We did that just so some of the work that goes, that, that isn't related to curriculum and instruction, that allows them to spread, spread some of the work so they can get into classrooms, they can get into PLC, and they can ensure that our students are, are learning at a higher level. And they're not bogged down with some of the other tasks that take them away from the classroom. We've also lowered class sizes in anticipation of high growth. In some of our elementary schools, we, we did lower those class sizes, knowing that more students would be coming to us. Added some resources here. These are live links that certainly our parents have access to, community members. These are TA links, the bottom one is our curriculum and course maps.
Board members, you have this information in your board book packet. But I do want to mention to, for those parents and community members in the room, as well as those who are watching online, this is a lot of information to take in in one setting. And so I just wanted to make mention to you that this information is out on the Prosper ISD website under tonight's agenda. So if you want to access this information, this is publicly available out on the site under the agenda.
Yeah, and just the last thing I'd say, just a lot of hard work by our teachers and our students to pour into these kids, just working as hard as we can to get them back pre-pandemic learning.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. This is informational, so there's no vote on it, but does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Shirley?
I did. You had mentioned in the year 2020, 2021, that we didn't have the test scores from the previous year to compare it to. And with that train of thought, with our fast-growing district and so many children moving here from out of state, not having their test scores to compare it to the year before, has that affected those scores some to get an accurate reading of where our kids really are?
It surely does. And even to add, the, the students that are new to us from out of state, or they could be homeschooled and didn't take a STAR test. Our third grade students don't count because they didn't take a STAR test in second grade to compare it to. It does have an impact on it. It's difficult to know how much in regards to, how much it would impact, but there is an impact there for sure.
Mr. Shirley, is there a set number that is our goal for meets grade level and exceeds? Do we have a number we're shooting for? And then year after year, what is our goal in terms of increasing?
Yeah. So we've included in our district improvement, improvement plan and in the campus improvement plan, specific scores for reading and math in third grade, that's a target, it was a requirement by the state. But the percent score, and I'm even going to jump you to, from meets to masters, the goal is 100. That's our goal every single day.
Anyone else, any questions or comments for Mr. Shirley? Thank you so much, Mr. Shirley. Red agenda item 6E, information on class size waivers.
Any questions about any of those?
Anybody?
We have, just so you're aware, we have three portables that have been ordered, one for Bradley, one for Reeves, and one for Fur Elementary. Ms. Hunt, our chief human resource officer, we've been in discussion too. I know in the past, we've tried to hire a paraprofessional to help support, but because of where we are and with our students and knowing that we're going to need the teachers, we've been trying to recruit and actually hire professional teachers to go into those classrooms to help support. So you end up with two teachers certified in the classroom versus the aide, who doesn't always have the training, obviously, that a certified teacher does.
Anybody any questions or thoughts about it? Thank you for that information, Dr. Ferguson. Board members, we're now at the action items for tonight. We have two action items, agenda item 7A, consideration and possible action on Edflex's school-wide eligibility waiver for Bryant and Reeves Elementary to receive Title I. For Bryant and Reeves Elementary to receive Title One Part A funds. This information is in your packet. For parents and community members, this is also available publicly on the website. If you wanted to see that information there. Any questions or comments about this action item?
Can can you just talk a little bit about what exactly that means?
So we end up qualifying for Title One money. And what happens is whenever the district, Prosper ISD gets an overall economically disadvantaged number. And we're at eight percent as an overall district. Any campus that exceeds that eight percent then can qualify for funding. And what we do with that that money is then we hire interventionist to help support our students that are in needing intervention. And so both Bryant and Reeves exceeded that eight percent.
And so this motion would only, it's only, it's specific to those two campuses?
Yes.
Other questions or comments about it? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. I'll second. And this is, I guess, Trustee Smith, just to. The motion is to approve this request from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, is that right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. So a motion by Trustee Smith, and it's second by Trustee Dial. Any other questions or comments about this before we take a vote on it? All in favor of this motion? That is all seven of us. Agenda item seven B, consideration and possible action regarding PISD board trustees subcommittees. Again, this information is in your packet as well. This is information that we've seen. Any questions or thoughts about this before we take a vote on it? And this is just to make this official, and then we'll post it out on the website as well. Just so the community has access to the information and knows for each one of us, what board subcommittee each one of us participates on. All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the board subcommittees.
I got it. I move that the board approve the board of trustees subcommittees as presented.
Thank you, Trustee Beavers, is there a second? Thank you, Trustee Cavender. Any other thoughts about this before we take a vote on it? All right, all in favor of this motion? That is all seven of us. Okay, that takes us through our action items for tonight. We're now at the point of consent agenda. Agenda item eight. Is the approval of the minutes from prior meetings. And so there are two prior meetings included in our consent agenda. That is a regular meeting from August the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the special meeting from September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And again, this is just simply to approve the minutes that we've had access to, and this is a part of consent agenda. All in favor? Well, let me, let me take a motion. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Trustee Smith, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Dixon, all in favor? All right, that's all seven of us. All right, we're moving right along. That takes us through our action items for tonight. We are now at public comment on non-agenda items. And so with this, we do have quite a few tonight. So we're going to allow for two minutes for. Public comment on non-agenda items. I read the lengthy script earlier. If I could, I'm not going to read the entire lengthy script. Let me just kind of highlight a couple things. So we have, looks like twenty speakers? Eighteen speakers? So two minutes each on on our speakers. And so with that, we are now at public comment on non-agenda items. Let me jump to the end. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking. And we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption, I will be forced to prematurely end the speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, in light of issues we've experienced over the past several board meetings, I must reiterate this call for respect. While the board understands presence of thoughts, feelings and emotions, the recent demonstrations of self-control and decorum has deteriorated. Thankfully, we've not, we've not had to escort anyone out of our meetings. I must make you aware that beginning tonight, no longer will the board allow for audible responses to a speaker's comments. Out of respect to both the speaker and the audience, I kindly ask that you completely refrain from clapping, cheering, yelling, booing, or otherwise audibly responding during this time. Foliation here to this request will be considered a disruption to the meeting. And should any audience member or group of members become a disruption, I'll be forced to remove that person or group from the meeting. Finally, it is important to the board that we hear from parents and individuals in our community. To that end, when the speaker gets to the podium, we kindly ask that you'll tell us your name and whether or not you live within the Prosper ISD boundaries. Again, two minutes, are you ready, Trustee Cavender? Good deal. Okay, I'm having a problem reading the first name on this first one. Last name is Johnson? Michelle, all right. No, it's fine. All right, Ms. Johnson, you have two minutes to address the board.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Johnson, and I have a son who attends and a daughter who will attend Rucker. I'm sure I'm reiterating a lot of what has already been said regarding the cover-up of sexual abuse within Prosper ISD. But I deserve to have my voice heard. I'd like to start out with a quote from Edmund Burke. The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. It's always easier to do nothing in difficult situations, but God looks for people who will speak truth in hard places. And Mr. Linker, I'd like to commend you for your leadership and transparency. I have witnessed the pain experienced from loved ones who were molested when they were younger. And the trauma follows them all the way into adulthood. The failure to protect these two little girls is infuriating and heartbreaking. And I can only imagine the guilt that their parents have struggled with. I pray that God, I pray for God's comfort and healing while they navigate the situation that will undoubtedly affect their future. This past Friday, Rucker implemented the house system. One of the house names translates to integrity. C.S. Lewis said integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching. If our children are to adhere to these principles, I expect the same and even more from the board. Ms. Ferguson, the buck should stop with you. And the email you sent out attempting to deflect to Ms. Baldaris was tone deaf. And shows you either don't understand or don't care to take any responsibility. You and anyone else who has had a hand in this cover-up need to resign immediately. I don't trust your leadership or your desire to put our children's best interests ahead of the ISD's reputation. I don't envy the situation you or the board are in right now, but this is the path you chose. As angry as I am, I still pray for wisdom and guidance for all of you. In closing, I'd like to share a verse from James, chapter four, verse seventeen from the Bible, it says. So for whoever does, I'm sorry. So for whoever knows the right thing to do and fails to do it, for him it is sin. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Emily Hildebrand. Ms. Hildebrand will be followed by Mr. James Pope. Good evening, Ms. Hildebrand, you have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you. My name's Emily Hildebrand. I do live in Prosper ISD, and I have two children in the district. I want to thank the Transportation Department for communicating the changes being made to keep our kids safe. More work still needs to be done. The worst thing that could happen right now is that we become complacent. We still need more changes, many of which are outlined in the memo that the peaceful protesters distributed to the district and school board personnel today. Specifically, we need policies and procedures that require timely notification to parents in the event that a case of sexual abuse occurred at their kid's school. And the community needs to know the results of the independent investigation so that we can understand how the red flags were missed that led to this prolonged abuse. We also need to know how the district plans to address any findings in the investigation. I stand with the Janies and want to see justice done, and I want to commend the peaceful protesters today for making their voices heard as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, James Pope. I'm a resident here at Prosper. I always reflect back at my time in law enforcement. And unfortunately, there have been too many times that I've had to interview both victims, suspects, and parents of a person abused. It's not easy. That's as far as I'll go with that, but it reminds me of a story. And not a very nice story of a time when I was a cop. And one of my beat partners who I found to be a good friend. I backed him up on the streets, I knew his family, I knew his friends. One day after the shift ended, he came running in and ran into the sergeant's office. And about thirty seconds later, state troopers came in and followed him in there. About ten minutes later, he came out in handcuffs. He was arrested. He was arrested for taking Monday, money from immigrants at rest stops. The department took the right steps immediately. They wrote a press release, they put it out. They called the media, and they explained what occurred and the fact the officer was arrested. What happened from that is several other victims came forward. That's what bothers me about this. We had an opportunity to inform the public. And it did not happen. Now, from what I understand, and I have not corroborated that, there are possibly other victims. Think about what they've gone through since this all happened. Think about what their parents have gone through. Sometimes it's better to take a black eye. Because if you take the black eye, that black eye will eventually go away. And you'll never know it was there. So please consider doing things differently in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Christine Capel, Kristin Capel? Capel? I apologize. Followed by Mr. Logan Baines.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Capel, and my husband Kyle and I have two children who attended Prosper ISD under Dr. Holly Ferguson. If I start to get emotional and can't finish this, Holly, you know I love you. Our family's first impression of Dr. Holly Ferguson in two thousand and seven at Rucker Elementary School was her amazing gift. Her ability to remember names, kids' names, parents' names, grandparents' names. Over the years, we soon realized that this gift of remarkable recall was only a small part of who Holly Ferguson was. You might think, why was each name important to her? Because Dr. Ferguson has invested in each of these names who have come through Prosper Schools. Each one, and built a relationship. She has made my kids better people. She has made Prosper ISD a better school district. Not just because of her great ability to recall names. But because of the investment that she makes in each child, parent, grandparent, teacher, and administrator with whom she interacts. Dr. Holly Ferguson, thank you for not only sharing your countless gifts, but also for being an irreplaceable gift to Prosper. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Capel. Mr. Baines, Mr. Baines will be followed by Joshua Murray. Good afternoon, Mr. Baines.
How are y'all? Great. Seems to be a trend here. I'll say something to that, I I noticed my pastor here tonight. Hey Connor, Matt Chandler's the pastor of the Village Church. You know what, he knows people's names too. But he had an inappropriate relationship with a person in his congregation, and he stepped down. He stepped down because he did the wrong thing. He handled the situation wrong. I came here tonight to discuss a press release that Holly had on June twenty-fourth of twenty-one by Huckabee, talking about being transparent with people. But when I walked in today, I see all these I support Prosper badges that people are wearing. I don't know if that's like a shot at us, because I haven't seen y'all at any of the other meetings since we've been here. But support doesn't mean that you don't stand for what's right. I would put myself up against any parent in this room for supporting Prosper ISD. I leave tomorrow at four AM to drive four hours to pick up my trailer on a job site so I can pull it on my birthday in the Prosper Homecoming Parade. The one that I have pulled a trailer in every single year and use my own funds to support Prosper ISD. I am, I'm active in watchdogs. I am active in both of my children's lives in school. I support Prosper ISD, but I don't support lies. I don't support people unfriending me on Facebook because I called them out. Mr. Beavers? You wanted to be my friend on Facebook when you wanted my vote. So I don't support lies, I don't support the way that y'all have handled things. I do support Garrett having integrity in class and standing up for what's right. So like I said, you can support Prosper ISD and still not support what's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray will be followed by Kim Henshaw.
Hey, good evening, board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joshua Murray. My kids do not attend Prosper ISD. I'm from a small town in Levon called Community ISD. I want to thank each one of the board members for your service to your city. And also to, you know, Dr. Ferguson for your service to Prosper ISD as well. But I think it's important that we all remember that our founders, they 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 built something that was very special. And they, of course, they never envisioned Prosper ISD. What they envisioned was taxing bodies and and governmental bodies that were able to tax people. And what they did is they established us as a republic, a republic that is a representative, because all people hold the power. But the people's power is invested in each one of y'all, and it's done through their vote. And the founders even understood that the representatives would not have the time to really manage the day-to-day operations of the people's government. And so what they did is they enabled governments, whether they be at the city level for a city manager, at the county level for a county administrator. Even at your school district level for a school superintendent, superintendent, to really manage a lot of those day-to-day operations. But all people still hold the power, and it's done through each one of y'all's votes. And what that comes down to is that you, as a representative of the people, have to look at the performance and the actions of the person that you've delegated this authority and this power to, and determine whether or not their actions are up to standard. Whether or not everything that they've done to this point, by just making one mistake, can erase all of that. I hate to say it, but it can. All of the good that you've done can be erased by one mistake. And so I'd encourage this board to look in into yourselves and determine whether or not the grievance of not following policies and procedures in which you've invested in somebody. Not doing what is the right thing. Are these grievances to the extent?
Mr. Murray, your time has expired.
In which they should no longer hold the position. Thank you.
Ms. Henshaw, Ms. Henshaw will be followed by Cindy Johnnely.
Good evening, Kim Henshaw, and I am in the district, I'll get right to it, since I have two minutes. I'm not suggesting that our superintendent was on the bus that day, that very, very irreplicable day. But what happened to those poor children, I'm suggesting it was completely mishandled, completely. The school has a responsibility to keep our children safe while they're there. And it has the responsibility to communicate with the parent community when there are problems and concerns. We receive emails, texts, when there's phone issues, false alarms, all of those, which are great. Something went wrong in the cafeteria. For goodness sake, we should certainly be thorough thoroughly communicated with when we have a pedophile, not just among us, but having sexually abusing children in our school. And sexual abuse is not a simple incident, which was dishonestly communicated as a cover-up. Local school board responsibilities can be grouped into these five categories I've summarized for two minutes. Adopt goals and priorities and monitor success, adopt policies and review for effectiveness, adopt a budget and set a tax rate. You've done those things. This is where you failed. Hire and evaluate the superintendent at all times. Communicate with community honestly and with transparency, which you have not done, except for Garrett Laker. Thank you. As elected school board members representing our community, the well-being of our children, and the ongoing success of our school district, we want you to act on your responsibilities, what we voted you to do. Along with the trauma that those children and their families are and will be dealing with for many years, there are also waves of negative attention on our community due to this. We want. An independent investigation, a real, truly independent investigation. Conducted, including communicating all information about the said investigation to all PISD households on an ongoing basis. Not just when it's complete. As we know now.
Thank you, Ms. Henshaw, your time has expired.
Just just know it's never too late to do the right thing. Look behind you at those pictures.
Thank you. Ms. Johnnely, Cindy Johnnely. Followed by Jill Bydl.
Holly, my name is Cindy Youngling, I do have kids in Prosper ISD. I've seen some comments on Facebook recently where the authors have written that we, the parents protesting and being outspoken. Won't be happy with anything the ISD says or does now. And sadly, at least for me, that is true. You waited till after the news broke? You waited till after the news broke, after parents demanded answers, after days of parents worrying and fearing that their child was near this predator to finally update the bus safety protocols and send out a half-baked letter about the tragedy, which was more of a letter defending the Rucker principle than anything else. You say you have confidence in the superintendent, principal, and legal counsel, even though the independent investigation has not been completed. You say you have confidence in them after they kept the incident quiet after the arrest, losing valuable time for other parents to check on their kids and see if they needed professional help. This does not reflect the actions of people who claim to care about all students. So note, based on what you've said and done to date, there is nothing any of you, excluding Garrett, can do that will make me feel better about leadership in Prosper, except to resign and let us have a clean start. This is what happens when you don't own your mistakes. This is what happens when trust is broken.
Thank you, Ms. Johnnely. Ms. Bydl? Followed by Janelle Davis. Ms. Bydl, you have two minutes to address the board.
Okay, and I have two students that have graduated from Prosper ISD and one that's currently in Prosper ISD. And I'm sitting here, and I know you all can't speak for yourselves. You have to sit there and listen and have to take negativity. And to me, it's really hard to sit here and listen to, so I can't imagine you guys. I know that there's things that you can't say. It's under investigation. I don't understand why people can't just be patient and wait till the truth all come out. Like, everybody here thinks they know what the truth is. I don't think anybody here knows what the truth is. Complete truth. Nobody does. And I'm gonna be patient, and I'm gonna wait, and I'm gonna trust that you guys are all doing what you need to be doing. And then we'll go from there. But in the meantime, it's really hurtful to me to see you all be up there and being told that you're not doing a good job. Because I think you guys are doing a good job. And so keep it up, keep your chins up.
Thank you, Ms. Bydl. Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis will be followed by Casey Yant.
My name is Janelle Davis, and I do have children in Prosper ISD. You have once again surprised me with the deplorable actions you're willing to take to protect yourselves. Not only did you completely fail all the children who rode Mr. Frank's bus, but now you're trying to stoke division and fear within the community. You have attacked the character of the one person on this dais who stands for truth in our children, Mr. Linker. And you're doubling down on your efforts to protect your perceived power. For those of you up there that claim to be Christians, your lack of spiritual discernment is showing. I suggest you crack open your Bibles and read the story of Jezebel. She may have ruled for a time. She may have fooled an entire kingdom. She may have killed some of Yahweh's prophets, but her reign of false authority and wickedness came to an end, and so will yours. Holly, I hope you enjoyed your cheering section tonight. You called in some favors, and they showed up big for you. But you will stand to account for your actions. It may not be today, it may not be tomorrow, but God willing, it will be sooner rather than later, before more families suffer. To the families of Rucker Elementary who still don't have answers, the Prosper community stands with you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Casey Yant? Good evening, Ms. Yant. You have two minutes. Ms. Yant will be followed by Stephanie Razor.
Good evening. My child is a fourth grader at Rucker Elementary and has attended since kindergarten. He's not zoned for Rucker, but attends as a dual-language student. Marisol Valderez has advocated for my child and his education since we entered the program, well before she was promoted to head principal. She continued attending to his 504 meetings even after becoming head principal, just as she always had. She has remained dedicated to his learning, and I expect she is dedicated to each and every student at Rucker Elementary. Today, protesters stood outside of my child's school. One side reading "Peto on Staff" was held across the street from where the young children were to be released. This seemed an unsettling tactic from some faces I saw outraged about the sexually explicit content about a children's book about a little boy with wings a few meetings ago. This is not a representation of my peers, neighbors, and community. It is misplaced in making a mockery of the real issue. I cannot speak to the complexity or legality of dealing with the horrible assault on the young girls from my child's school. I can, however, speak up for an amazing principal that stands up for her students and the limited power she must have in situations like this. I understand the desire to find someone to blame, and I agree there needs to be accountability from the proper people, but there's a chain of command in this district, and they are sitting in front of you. As I mentioned earlier, my child is not zoned for Rucker. We could leave at any time, but we support our school and our principal. And I'm here right now to advocate for Ms. Valderez because I respect her and I appreciate her. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Razor? Stephanie Razor will be followed by Cindy Zabrowski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been here many times. I'm one of these normal parents that you see complaining about something every month. However, I got a ride here tonight from Katie Ewing. If anybody knows who Katie Ewing is, she is my exact opposite counterpart in local politics. But we've come together because the situation with those two poor little girls and the bus driver, it supersedes. This is not an us against them. This is a, two little girls were hurt very badly. And they're gonna deal with that for the rest of their lives. And it happened from September to May, which seems unconscionable. How can that possibly be that no one noticed anything untoward for an entire school year? It almost seems impossible, because it probably is. And that's where the anger comes from. Because I said maybe a year ago at a school board meeting that we have a transparency problem, and we absolutely do. We also have an accountability problem, and that's bigger. And this is why we're finding ourselves here today. Because your job as our school board members is to hold our administration accountable. And you know, it doesn't matter how great they were. Doesn't matter if they gave your kid a lollipop or sat in on your 504 meeting. It doesn't mean that they can't make a mistake. And this mistake is epic. It's major. It's unforgivable. And it's career-ending, and it should be. I'm sorry, Holly. It's career-ending. You deserve to be great. You do. And you know, all we've heard about in the last year is how the growth has been so encumbering to you. So I'm gonna suggest that maybe 25,000 students isn't your niche. Maybe your niche is 12. And you know what? There's a lot of districts out there with 12. So I'm encouraging you, please go be great. And let us get somebody great for Prosper, because it doesn't look like it's you anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Razor. Your time has expired. Cindy Zabrowski will be followed by Candia Chastain.
Hi.
Good evening.
I am Cindy Zabrowski, and I actually have a recent graduate of Prosper High School and an 11th grader. Both will be K-12 graduates, so we've been within the district for about 13 years now. And let me start by saying that we all agree that the safety of our children should come first. And I am doing this at the risk of having my reputation destroyed on Facebook. And I'm doing it here to speak on behalf of thousands of parents and staff who support Dr. Ferguson. Dr. Ferguson was my son's elementary principal, and I have known her to be an exceptional leader, to respect discretion, follow the law, and always focus on children first. Superintendents of her caliber are not easily found. We have several districts within the DFW area that are looking for exceptional superintendents. That's why it's imperative that as a community, we let the independent investigation continue and not speculate or pass inaccurate information on our Facebook pages to stoke divisiveness. We need to protect these little girls from being exploited any further. And once the investigation is complete, we can make decisions that are in the best interest of these girls, our students, staff, and Prosper ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zabrowski. Candia Chastain will be followed by Mike McCurdy.
Hello, good evening. Somebody asked earlier for proof. Well, here is the arrest of Frank Peniagua. And it says here, "Sex abuse of child, continuous victim under 14." Whether he abused a kid on that bus in Prosper ISD, or he abused his own child at home, you know what? That person should have been fired, and we should have been let know that that guy was a pedophile on that bus. We are yet to find contact, communication with the parents, and that's what I stand here for. I stand here for because there are so many parents in this room that had children on that bus that were affected by this, that are yet to be contacted. They're yet to say, you know what? There is a timestamp on that TEA report that was submitted to the commissioner. You know, we sit here, and we heard earlier from our CFO, we are a $229 million revenue school district with still no actionable policies to protect and assist students when across a sexual predator, whether, again, whether it happened to a Prosper ISD student or not. We're in an affluent city with tons of resources. I do not understand what's taking so long. Yesterday, with a click on an email and a phone call, you guys were able to send so many police officers today to our protesting site. Can you use that same strategy to write up policies now? Can, your CFO said, "We are under budget." So can you use that budget gap to like address these policies that are very important to us? I have asked numerous times, what happens if this happened to my child today? I wanna know. I don't wanna talk about me. I don't wanna talk about the Janies. I wanna talk about the Chastain kids that could potentially be molested tomorrow. How would you address this? And you're yet to answer that. I have asked that before, and I've said it again. You need to act now. Leadership involved in this scandal should go on a concerted leave. They should refrain from social gatherings representing Prosper ISD until these investigations are done. Somebody else can represent Prosper ISD. This wonderful teacher that just won an award should represent Prosper ISD, not you.
Your time has expired. Mike McCurdy will be followed by Eileen Riverside.
Yeah, I'm here to represent the Janies. And I'm not gonna sugarcoat. They were raped. And there's over 100 allegations of that happening. And if this happened to any of the school board members' kids, all heck would be raised for that. I don't live in Prosper, by the way. Dr. Ferguson, I don't know you, but you need to resign immediately. Otherwise, we need an up-down vote from all of the school board members to terminate her immediately. And we need that vote, public vote. We need to know where each of you stand. And I want to acknowledge Garrett Linker on his courage to stand up for the two young women, or two young girls, who got allegedly raped over 100 times. This is serious. This is career-ending. Dr. Ferguson, you need to resign. That's the end, the end of it. And I want to know who these thousands of parents are in Prosper who support you, besides the four cheerleaders that showed up tonight. We need us as parents in Prosper to stand up. Anyone who supports this superintendent needs to be booted out of office the next election. If this isn't a wake-up call to us, nothing is. Two girls got raped. Raped 100 times. Enough is enough. If you wanna run for school board, now's your chance. You will win, standing up for little innocent girls. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. Eileen Riverside. Followed by Julie Whitaker.
My name is Eileen Riverside, and I live within Prosper ISD. I have two children that attend two different elementary schools. My child was one of the children on one of Mr. Frank's buses. And I've spoken before, but I kinda wanted to clarify my stance. I don't blame the district for what happened. But I don't think the incidents were handled the way that they probably should have been. I know that there were others on my children, on my child's bus, that were notified, emailed, and phone-called. And I haven't received either. My family hasn't received anything, which I find very concerning. But I'll continue to wait for my phone call or email that is specific to my family and what happened to my child.
Thank you, Ms. Riverside. Julie Whitaker. Followed by Eileen Bukowski.
Hello, my name is Julie Whitaker. I live here in Prosper. I have two children that attend Prosper ISD schools, one elementary, one middle school. I'll start out. I believe the term transparency was used last time we met, and we have yet to see any being utilized. Just as you sent out numerous emails about COVID contacts, which, you know, greatly appreciate all of that, you had the ability to send out a notification about this much more important issue. Is it true that Garrett Linker has been left out of emails? Why? Are you afraid he will step up and bring light to darkness? Whoever falls in line to protect a person who used such poor judgment in this allegation should and will be held just as a culpable. Everyone on this board has the duty, to us parents and the students, to protect and inform. Just like a burnout light bulb, you can be replaced. I'll leave you with this. Remember, the sins of some people are obvious, leading them to certain judgment. But there are others whose sins will not be revealed till later. In the same way, the good deeds of some people are obvious, and the good deeds done in secret will someday come to light. That's in the Bible, 1 Timothy, chapter 5, verse 24 through 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Bukowski?
While Ms. Bukowski is coming, let me just briefly mention, I know some of the speakers ran out on time tonight. And then maybe there is someone here who didn't have an opportunity to speak. Maybe speaking publicly is not your thing. Please know that each one of the school board members has an email address. And so if you'd like to email us your thoughts or comments, concerns, please feel free to send that to the school board members via email. Again, particularly those of you who ran out of time. Ms. Bukowski?
Thank you. My name is Eileen Bukowski. I have three children in this district. I don't believe the superintendent knows their names. And one of them has had five teachers in the last six weeks in statistics. I think she probably thought that she could use that class to avoid business-level math, but I don't think she's going to be able to, because she's not learning anything in that class. We're distracted with things. We're not getting the learning done, because we're too distracted with these things. But these things are important. And I'll put the learning aside any day, but you have a job to do, and you're not doing it. We have been faced, and we've been hearing tonight, about failed policy, failed leadership, falling grades. And you only need to answer 78% of the questions correct, to master them, by the way. So a C grade will get you mastery in Texas on the star test. We have broken trust. We have loyalty to failure, which is a double tragedy here, except for on the part of Mr. Garrett Linker. I spent some time with the Rucker parents today, and they are so heartbroken, and they are so bewildered. And they were also so offended to have so much police protection around the school from them. My best friend in middle school was molested by her stepfather. And you know what? It was never easy for her to get over this, but she could at least come to terms with the fact that the man was a monster. But what she couldn't get over was the other adults in her life that she had trusted, that they should have had their eyes open, that they should have seen, and they should have done the right thing. And they didn't. That she never got over. 100 times. 100 times. And as she, well, the other adults in her life let her down, and you are letting the Janies down. The thing you need to know is that those wounds will never really heal. We aren't going away. These packed rooms of the boardroom are not going away. The petitions are not going away. The press is not going away. You're never gonna hear the end of this. This is a major leadership failure. They are not media stunts. This is a mandate. We don't want your leadership. And anybody on this board who wants to continue to stand with this leadership should step down as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bukowski. Your time has expired. That takes us to all of our public comment speakers tonight. Thank you to everyone who chose to share your thoughts with the board. We do appreciate them. We're now at agenda item 10, and we're going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. Once we're done in closed session, we will return to public session to vote on any items that need to be voted on. Thank you for coming and spending your night with us. Have a great evening. Thank you for coming and spending your night with us. Have a great evening. Okay, it is 9:16 PM, and we are back in open session, back from closed session. And so we are at Agenda Item 11A, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Hiring Contract Personnel. Is there a motion?
I move, you got it, Kelly.
I move that the board approve the hiring of all contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Trustee Cavenders. Our second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Trustee Dahl. All in favor? That is all seven of us. That takes us through all of our agenda items for this evening.